Okay, I'm going to call to order the Monday, November 3, Brooklyn City Board of Education Work Session. Mr. Sheerhart, we call roll please.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Hubble.
Here.
Ms. Rafter.
Here.
Mr. Hazroni.
Here.
And Ms. Crawl.
Here, please stand for the fudge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
We resolve that the Brooklyn Board of Education approves the Board of Education Agenda from November 3, 2025, as recommended by the Treasurer and Superintendent. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sheerhart, we call roll please.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Hazroni.
Yes.
Mr. Hubble.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawl.
Yes. Good evening, Ms. Crawl, Board of Education. Item 2.1 is the public hearing and information regarding the introduction of the Brooklyn City School District District Calendar for 26, '27 school year. You have a draft copy of the calendar in front of you. Everything models pretty much what we've done similar in previous years. Couple changes. August 12, we're going to attempt to do the Welcome Back Rally and actually, we're going to add a movie night, family movie night on August 12. Kind of talking to Mr. Zofka, kind of avoid some of the activities as we ramp up with the fall season. Also, kind of avoid some of the conflict with starting of school. So, we're going to try that. We'll have a rain date probably announced as we get closer to that date. You can see Teacher Records Day. What we're going to do a little differently this year, this is really the big change. One of the things that I heard from both staff and parents this fall is that having student orientation open house the night before the first day of school made it a little difficult for both staff and our families. So, if you look at the calendar, August 21 is going to be a records day for our staff. The following Monday, which is the 24th, second day, will be a student orientation open house. If you look to the next day, on the 25th, that's going to be a no-school day for students and that will actually be our staff convocation in-service day. And then, we will begin the first day of school for K through, or pre-K through 12. Now, I will say, the kindergarten transition days are pretty similar to what we've done last couple of years. We do have preschool transition days. It's not listed on the calendar for a couple of reasons because it really depends on ages and some other factors. So, the preschool staff takes care of notifying our preschool families of when their, of what their transition looks like. Talking to Grant from Dunlap &amp; Johnson, not really any conflict with the construction piece that we got going on this summer. High school's going to be busy with the renovation and construction, but really, whether we delay, we had another week or so, really wouldn't make a difference. And part of the goal, too, was to make sure we were out by the beginning of June because there may be a slight chance that depending how construction goes, we may need some summer work done in June and possibly July. So, we wanted to make sure he was more concerned about on the back end of the 26, '27 school year with regards to getting them out and getting him in on time. You can see, we're looking at May 28 as a graduation commencement ceremony at the stadium. We will have rain dates and very similar to what we're going to do this year. Just as a reminder, auditorium will not be available this year for commencement, so we will definitely have a commencement date along with a couple of rain dates and we'll announce those to families hopefully early spring so that they can start planning. We know families sometimes travel in from out of town, so we'll get them that information pretty quickly. Any questions? Any comments? This is just an introduction. Take a, you know, take a look at it over the next two, three weeks. We will, I'll put this in front of the board at our second meeting in December for final vote because I have to have 30 calendar days between introduction and approval, so that gives us plenty of time. And again, plenty of time for you to make any question, have any questions or comments. Also, real quick, I have worked with both our certified and classified union on this calendar, so we're all on pretty much the same page with regards to the calendar. Okay, great, thank you.
Comments from visitors regarding the district calendar? In order for the Board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation as it pertains to school-related topics will be permitted at each meeting. Each person wishing to address the Board will approach the podium and state his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted three minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a majority of the Board. All right. We resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the first reading of the following Board Policies: Assignment and Transfer, Personal Communication Devices, Release Time for Religious Instruction During the School Day, Audit, Recent Electronic Data Processing Disaster Recovery Plan, Continuity, oh, thank you, of Organizational Operations Plan, Student Abuse and Neglect.
I sent the Board a copy of these probably two, three weeks ago now. Again, first reading, if you have any more questions, shoot me a, give me a call, send me an email. We'll have the second reading, final reading, on the second meeting in November. Item 3.2, Ms. Crawl, is the review of 2026 Board of Education Meeting Dates. And these are the calendar dates for Board meetings. Pretty much everything has followed a first Tuesday, third Tuesday format over the course of the calendar year. Still have them at 6:15. Just one item of note, and I know we had April 7, is going to be our spring break next year, assuming the Board approves the calendar in December. So, that will coincide with us being here, but spring break going on. I know that was a conflict for a couple of Board members this past year. I would recommend if we don't want to have a meeting during spring break, that we just go to one meeting that month. That would be my, as opposed to trying to do the second or fourth because I know Polaris' is the second. Yeah, so that would be my recommendation, but again, whatever the Board wants to do.
I just want to give my two cents. I think because, you know, to just remain consistent with the public is we always say that our meetings are the first and third Tuesdays, so I would just say that if something comes up, instead of always trying to replan and get a new date and get everybody on the same date, you know, we all have busy lives, I would just leave it as that and if you can't make it, then you can't make it. But that's just my two cents.
What happens if we don't have a quorum?
Then, I mean, then we would, we would take that into consideration, but usually it's only like one person because they, you know, whatever. I just think that always trying to reschedule on everyone's schedules makes it more difficult.
I agree.
Like I said, we tell the public the first and third except for during the summer, so I think we should just remain consistent.
Ms. Rafter, in case of no quorum, sickness, illness, whatever, we would, if we had three Board members that weren't able to attend, then I would recommend canceling that meeting for that evening.
Do you want us to stay consistent because they have, just like we're doing today, next, on this one, November 2nd, it's a Monday?
Because of election day.
Right, do you want us to keep that?
I think we should keep it like that. Just, I think we should consistently not do it.
Last year, we were. So, I modeled this calendar versus what we did this year because there have been a bit of that.
But then, I think the year before, we did it on a Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Email?
Okay, I'll have this for Board approval on the, at our next meeting.
Okay, and we'll move on to the Treasurer, the Treasurer's report.
The Records Retention Committee met on October 21 to discuss, we are having some storage issues with student records and employee records. So, we reached out to Strategic Solutions to give us a quote on digitizing all of the past items that shouldn't be used, that are in storage. The, there was actually well over a million things, million records to be digitized. It's something that has not been done for quite a while, my understanding is. So, there are quite a few records. The quote that we got from Strategic Solutions, we are looking at probably, let's see, sorry. Ended up being about $162,000. So, there's 1.3 million images to do. One of the major things that we need to look at is a lot of the old records are done on microfiche. The machines, once they break, you cannot get parts for them anymore because they are so old. One of the concerns is that the medium, that, or I'm sorry, media, that the records are stored on can break down over time and because of their age, they may have trouble trying to read them and things. So, the Records Commission got together and talked about that. One of the things that we would be able to do if we went with Strategic Solutions would be to spread that cost over five years. So, they would break the digitizing into five different, five different groups over the five years and do it that way. Again, it's something that has not been done for a long period of time and it should probably be definitely addressed one way or another in the future in the next probably couple of years.
Is it paper storage now?
There, it's all stored here.
It's all stored on premises? Oh, I thought we had it off-site.
There are some, and that's like $400 a month. It's not, yes, not that much. And that we will be moving over because that's the financial records.
Have we received those quotes?
Not at this point, just this. Currently, Strategic Solutions does our, is the special ed, the special ed records, they digitize those and do that for us. That is why we reached out to them because we know they do a good job and they have it.
Are there other companies that other school districts use that you know of?
I don't know of any specific names. I can reach out and find out from other Treasurers what other districts use.
Just curious.
So, we're not asking to do anything, do a contract or anything, so yeah, I'll see if I can get some other quotes. That's all I have.
Any more questions? Or any questions?
No, not really, no.
All right, then we'll move on to the Superintendent's report.
Okay, everybody. Item 4.2 is my monthly update on the renovation and construction. And there's lots of information in there, lots of pictures. I'll kind of go over some of the highlights within some of the projects we have going on. Main Gym is obviously next on the list to be completed, tentatively opening up January 3, 2026. Some of the remaining projects, remaining parts of the renovation at the main gym include sound panel installation on the ceilings and the side walls. That'll happen after the floor refinish while they're doing the bleachers. They're currently doing the floor refishing, which I sent some pictures of today. Door installation, going to be working on the athletic hallway. Only part of the athletic hallway right now that will not be addressed this winter, fall winter, is the terrazzo. We're going to wait until the summer until we do all the terrazzo in one piece. Yeah, all the salt and everything like that. Bleachers, scoreboards will be done come beginning December 8. And then, we're working on finalizing the electrical at the main gym and some of the big panels in that vault room that I spoke of. So, progressing, coming along, everything's in, so we're thinking we should be pretty good in terms of kind of finalizing that project. If you go to page, and you can see through, through the remaining doc, you'll see updated pictures. So, lights were installed over the weekend, end of last weekend, over the weekend. Sound system's done, painting is pretty much done. They'll come in at the end and do some patch and paint work throughout the gym just to make sure everything's cleaned up. But this month, it's the main project is the floor refinishing and working on the hallway. If you go to page, page 8, if you go past the bus garage on the way home, you will see that they did the primer today for the bus garage and they should have that done in the next couple of days, so pretty excited. Some of our, some of the workers were pretty cool today, I heard from Officer Meadows, so kind of wishing them the best in the next couple of days. I did mention this in my report last week, but I'll mention again, that stadium banner's done, so that's on the backside of the whole bleachers. That's going to come down in the next two, three weeks. We'll budget for a new banner come next summer, so just FYI, that thing's got to come down. Sandy's done as much as she can with that, with it, and it's probably over 10, 12 years old now, so.
It looks like it's going through a hurricane.
What was that?
Like a hurricane.
Like a hurricane, absolutely. If you go to the next section, Capital Improvement Finance, just an update of the allowance grant has actually done better on the allowance piece than he anticipated. So, right now, we have a credit in the project allowance for CMR of about $18,491. So, that's to the good for us, meaning, meaning we will use some of that allowance if needed for further projects. But remember, if that allowance isn't used, it comes back to our total. We have not used any owner's contingency and we have not used any CMR contingency. So, project is, knock on wood, better than expected right now. Think what we've been finding with the construction is that, and I'll go back over it again, he's going through the athletic hallway, wants to put electrical piping through the, and we found a piece of plumbing that we had to move. So, obviously, with renovations, you don't know what you're going to find when you look at, when you open up these old buildings, but absolutely thrilled with Dunlap &amp; Johnson. He's a, him and Dana with ABG, they're great communicators, Sandy and I and Lisa, Mark, we meet with them weekly just to go over some of the little things. So, take a look at the finance. If you have any questions, let me know. If you go to the next section, Project Timelines, I anticipate they're doing the caulking on the stadium home side right now. Come spring, they will, they will power wash and seal the bleachers, so the caulking should be done in the next month or so. If there's any issues with it, they'll obviously come back and clean that up in the springtime. Bus garage will be done in the, this week, let's just say, and then hopefully I'll be reporting in the next, next month that we're on track to finish the gym. If you go to the next page and if you look on that page number 10, I believe, that last page before the, right after the chart there. Demo of the auditorium begins Thursday, March 19, immediately right after the completion of the Spring Musical. Band and choir classes will be relocated to other classrooms at the high school after spring break. So, we're going to spend, they're going to start demoing.
2026.
2026, yes, sir, 2026, yep. Band and choir classes will be relocated. We're working with Mr. Larson right now to work on some of the greater moves that are going to happen, but we'll spend most of January, February, and part of March getting ready for these moves, cleaning, those types of things. Foundational work, like I said, at the stadium is occurring right now. This is the big one, so beginning March, April of next year, we are going to be closing off the sidewalk in front of the Board Office. The construction trailer's going to move up front and then the work on the Board Office entrance is going to begin, right? So, what'll end up happening is we'll have a security fence all the way around the construction trailer, blocking off the sidewalk, part of the, part of the driveway where the parking spots are in front of the Board. However, we'll have no issues with to and from traffic at that entrance. So, the only thing we're going to be limiting is pedestrian walking. Thought is a couple of things, and we're still working through this, potentially hiring a part-time monitor to help with some of the pedestrian traffic. One of my big concerns is that kids just kind of popping out in front of traffic, crossing over to the side of the church and then walking along the grass. Trust me, it's going to happen. I know it's going to happen, but we still want to make sure kids are safe. What we're going to say to our parents is that we prefer them to exit the high school if they have to get the bit off, exit through the front of the high school and walk along Bit Off, or if they want, enter through the blue lot in the back, back to Borwald and then back up. So, little bit of an inconvenience. We're hoping that, we're hoping that we can reopen the sidewalk come beginning of 26, '27 school year. Still working through it, but we'll work, as we work through some of the finer details, I'll continue to update the Board with that. That's the big piece, and again, obviously, in the summer, we'll be, we'll be starting a lot of, most of the work at the high school stadium work with concession stand, locker rooms will not happen until after next fall season. And that being said, that is my construction report. Okay. Last item I have, and I want to turn it over to Lisa and the team. Little statement, because I think at this time of our, of public education, it's really important to say this, and you know, again, I want to say this to the Board for record and I want to say it for the folks that are going to watch this presentation. Public schools are the heart of our community. They're more than classrooms and test scores. They're places where children learn, families gather, and civic life takes root. I've seen firsthand how our Brooklyn schools serve as the anchor for our students and families, providing stability during uncertain times. Year after year, Brooklyn has invested in our school district and that investment continues to strengthen the very fabric of our community. Tonight's presentation is more than a report on our State Report Card. That's part of it. It's our annual progress report on initiatives, programming, and district vision that impact our staff, students, and school community. It is a demonstration of the investment we continue to make in our students. While we will review various measures and outcomes, we must remember that our children are not numbers. This year, we are proud to celebrate earning a four-star rating on the State Report Card for the third consecutive year. We celebrate these results, we learn from the data, and we remain focused on achieving higher levels of success. And I always look at the report card as, I want to be able to report to you before my time is done here as Superintendent, that we're a five-star district. And what I will tell you is, our kids, our staff, and the work that you support does that, right? And so, I'm hoping as we continue to make initiative, to make advancements in our programming, we're going to be able to report that four and a half or that five-star down the road. True organizational change and sustained success do not happen overnight. They take consistency, a clear focus plan, and collective commitment to continuous improvement. Our district's progress is the result of steady leadership, collaboration, and a shared belief that every step forward, no matter how small, strengthen the opportunities we provide for our students. Our work has always been and will always be focused on the whole child. I want to take a moment to thank our administrative leadership team that's going to present this evening, our teachers, our classified staff, our families and parents for their continued support of our strategic mission. Together, we ensure that Brooklyn City Schools remain the heart of this community. None of this work would be possible without the steadfast support of our Board of Education, and I do mean that. Your vision, guidance, and commitment to our mission ensure that our schools have the resources, directions, direction needed to thrive. The Board's belief in a continuous improvement and in doing what's best for students helps drive every decision we make as a district, and I will tell you, it makes my job as Superintendent that much easier because of your support. So, on behalf of the leadership team, I want to thank the Board, but I want to now introduce Ms. DeLeese, our Assistant Superintendent, who will take this opportunity with our team to review a year in review of Brooklyn City Schools. Ms. DeLeese.
One, I'm leaving in 2027. I'm challenging the administrative team, the staff, the Superintendent, four and a half stars by the time I leave. He's at five in '30, '31, but I'm challenging four and a half.
And we are, we are working, we are working towards that.
It's a challenge.
There you go. We love challenges.
We do like a good challenge, so.
All right.
Thank you.
It's on record.
Thank you. So, this is our, our year in review for the '24, '25 school year and kind of moving into, obviously, it's what occurred last year, but what we're moving into. So, this is all part of our strategic plan of Vision 2030, where we anticipate, where our goals are and where we want to be. I think it's really important that we take a minute to understand our demographics. Who are we servicing, those students that come into our doors? And we, one of our greatest assets, I believe, is our diversity in our population, and so this is just a nice number, you know, what you see district-wide, what's at Brooklyn High School and what's at our, well, now, now, I'm going to have to move out pre-K out of there, so pre-K through 7 building and now they move, so next year, we'll have to correct that.
That was last year.
So, this is last year, '24, '25, so it's not an error. I love it, thank you. So, as you can see, the diversity here at Brooklyn is definitely something we cherish. One of the big items that we are talking about, and I'm going to add a word "I" in here because the state probably just a week or two ago came out with Integrated Multi-tiered Systems of Support. So, now, we're calling it IMTSS, and we are looking at our structures and our systems for behavior, for attendance, for academics. How do we put this all together and how do we provide prevention, intervention, and enrichment for all of our students, depending on where they're at? And so, this is looking at the whole child, the components of how we engage our parents, how we engage our students, what curricular resources are we using, what are the post-secondary goals that our students are bringing, and what pathways are we creating? What is the professional development? How do we work as teams? And so, over this, we've been talking about MTSS at Brooklyn, and you're going to see a nice, I love the umbrella and putting everything under. Lately, it's felt like it's kind of been in silos. Oh, we just talk academics, we just talk attendance, or we talk behavior or social, emotional, and you realize, all of those facets connect to the whole child. You can't talk about one and not talk about the other. So, MTSS or IMTSS, if you start hearing about it, this is how we plan on moving from a four to four and a half or five. We're going to go through this process to do that. As Dr. Clarice already stated, our overall district rating was a four, and you can see all of the components that are on the report cards are listed here, and as we go through the presentation tonight, we'll dive more into each of those categories. Overall, the Brooklyn School, Brooklyn City Schools exceeded state standards with a four. Brooklyn High School exceeded state standards with a four, and our Brooklyn School was a three and a half, which meets state standards. One of the nice things that, you know, as we look and we say, okay, we're Brooklyn, we're small but mighty, is what are some of the other districts around us or in our area? How are How are we comparing? And we know the work we do in Brooklyn, but sometimes it's nice to see what's going on around us. And so, and I always add, I think I've talked about this the past couple of years, the state puts out a districts that are similar to you, whether similar in size, demographics, socioeconomic status. Wickliffe happens to be one of those districts. It's in Lake County, but it's right on the edge, next to Euclid of, and I only know it because that is my alma mater, I did graduate from Wickliffe. But they are very similar to us in, they're a similar district. So that's why they happen to be on here, so that, for that comparison.
Conversation, don't worry, it's all good.
What's that?
He asked me if I sent that to my brother. So we've already had the conversation. We've already had the conversation.
For sure. So, this is the state, this is the state star ranking. This is when you take all of those components that were shown earlier and put them together. We ranked 255 out of 607 school districts. Out of all the components of our report card, our percent, our numbers put us at 255 out of 607 school districts. Our high school, just comparing high schools. High school's a lot easier to compare than elementary schools, because some districts have multiple elementary buildings. And so it's a little more difficult to compare. But we are right, we are in there with many of the districts around us. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Valenza and Dr. Janet Kubasak to talk about early literacy.
Good evening, everybody. So, the state, when we, when we look at early literacy according to the state standards, it's starting in kindergarten. So it's kindergarten through third grade. But in our district, and this is led by our district's literacy leadership team, we look at literacy as a journey that starts in preschool and continues all the way through 12th grade. So we don't look at it as just starting in kindergarten, it starts before that. This year's kindergarten class really shows how important that early start is. About one-third.
Advance this slide. There you go, thank you.
Thank you. About one-third of our students went to preschool here in Brooklyn. So these are our current kindergartners. About one-third of the students from last year are sitting in our seats in Brooklyn kindergarten. Another third of our current kindergartners attended a preschool outside of the school district. And then that final third, they didn't attend preschool anywhere. What we've seen in our data and in our kindergarten classrooms is that children who attend our preschool come to kindergarten more prepared and confident than their peers. So some of the ways that we help prepare our preschoolers for kindergarten are shown here on this slide. So the first thing that we do is we use a resource called the Creative Curriculum as our core instructional resource. This is a hands-on, play-based approach that helps children through fun, meaningful activities and projects in all areas of academics. The second thing that we do is we host many family and community engagement events. And the pictures there that you're seeing is, the one is from our first Play and Learn and Play Saturday that we held last month, and we have many more to go this year. So hopefully, we'll see people from the community attending those. And then the other pictures you see were from last year, and that was from a science event that was held at the preschool. So our family engagement events do have an academic focus. And then the other pictures that you see in the corner, we do quite a bit of things for our preschoolers when they transition to kindergarten. And the one that we've had going now, I think it'll be our seventh year coming up, is a kindergarten kickoff program. And that is open to students who are enrolled in Brooklyn's Early Childhood Program. So this is Dr. Kubasak, and she's going to talk to you about the report card rating and things happening at Brooklyn School, all literacy-related.
Thank you. Thank you. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our early literacy rating. This rating is designed slightly different than all the other ratings that you look at. When you're looking at your early literacy, you're actually looking at a fall-to-fall testing schedule. So instead of looking at our fall score and then what happens in the spring, we actually put children in cohorts. And so they're tested in the fall. If they're off track, they're tested in the next fall to determine if they're on or off track. However, any new students or any students that have become off track then are added to that cohort. So it becomes a fall-to-fall cohort initiative, and it ends up in our third grade. So our third grade looks at a fall-to-fall cohort initiative, and then it also comes back and looks at your third grade testing. So your third grade has a couple of components in there. So right now, we've been looking at our performance moving forward. We already kind of know where the fall-to-fall scores are, right? We already took that score. And we're waiting on that third grade spring report card, because that's the one spring score that impacts this grade. So right now, we're sitting at 418, but that's just where we're at. It's not who we are. There's a lot of things that we're putting in place to go ahead and move that forward fairly quickly, actually. So one of the first things that we changed up within the building is we looked at our testing calendar. All of our community schools realize that kindergarten has 20 days to test their fall-to-fall students. And we were testing slightly earlier, so we are moving that date back. We also started to look at, if you are in first grade through third grade, you have until the end of the month of September to test, those 30-day window. We've moved that back as well, giving our kids ample time to have some of that knowledge build up ahead of time instead of coming right into the district for testing. To give them some of that confidence, but to also give them the understanding of what's something that's going to be on that test? And how can we pre-support you prior to taking a fall-to-fall initiative test? The other thing that we're looking at is we're looking at giving our kids the access that designed assessment supports that have been available to our students, such as students are able to have a one-on-one read the test aloud to themselves during a testing. Students are able to be in small groups. There's a lot of universal designs that our kids have access to for our testing. So we wanted to ensure that they had access to those things. We also talked about data in our meetings. So we're really digging into that data, not just screening, but actually diagnostics. So instead of looking at something as a big whole, we're actually bringing it down to what is the actual gap that a student has? And then how do we close that specifically? What does that look like? And then we're looking at daily interventions and enrichments. We have a period that we're actually using that data to have flexible grouping and to target the students with specifically what they need. And if our students are already in a place where they're really ready to learn, we can move them forward and beyond that, so they're ready even further than they were in the past. We're not providing new instruction during that time, because that's a time either to enrich what we already have or to support what we know in our gaps. So the other piece that we're looking at is really looking at attendance, because we all know if they're not here, can't teach them, right? So how can we really support our kids coming to the building? And thinking about having conferences, we've been meeting with students and parents and asking them, like, what are some of these barriers? How can we support you getting to school? Looking at our PBIS, not only as behaviors, but using part of that as attendance and giving out attendance rewards and prizes and having some competitive fun things. I don't know if you saw our Shake It Off for first quarter, because we're moving into second quarter. They're really looking at PBIS and having those awards for attendance. We have the Stay in the Game with the Browns, Cleveland Browns, and they've been training some of the administration on what are some good techniques in providing that uptake in attendance. And then finally, we're putting together attendance teams. So those attendance intervention teams not only look at families and supporting the students, but then what other barriers that you have that we can help with our social workers or with our counselors? And how can we support the whole family attending and getting that support into having you attend school? So that is really some of the initiatives that we're putting together at the school. So moving that testing calendar a little bit, giving our kids more prep time, realizing that this is a fall-to-fall score and assessment, looking at some of our curricular practices through the UFLI program that really breaks down phonemic awareness and phonics, all the way down to the grit of a diagnostic versus a screener. And then moving forward with having our kids here and in the seats so they can learn. Because we have great teachers, we have incredible programs available, and if they're not here, they don't get access to those things. We really just want them here, so we can support them. And that's really where we're looking at in that early literacy, because that score is going to move forward pretty quickly. So from there, we're going to look at Ms. Frey, who's going to be working on our gap-closing pieces. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk to you about one of the measures, the components. It's called gap-closing. Gap-closing makes up about 12.5% of our overall report card score. And gap-closing, simply, means that we are looking at how our students' subgroups are doing and performing against all the state benchmarks and thresholds. Earlier in the presentation, Ms. DeLeese displayed a slide to you, for you, that showed us all the different subgroups that we have in our community, and it's so diverse. And so really, that's what it's looking at. How are we growing our student subgroup population? Now, in order to be considered part of a subgroup, you have to have at least 15 students represented, and we do in our district. We do have 15 students represented in all eight subgroups. Some of those subgroups are, measure our EL learners, how they're achieving, how they're growing, measure our chronic absenteeism rate, our graduation rate, and just all the progress our students are making in each one of those subgroup areas. Now, if you take a look from last year, this is an area that we slipped in a little bit. And compared to the 607 districts that are, that we have, Brooklyn was at 435. So we know that this is an area of focus for us. What are we going to do? Well, in taking a closer look at some of the areas that we did not meet, English learner progress is an area of growth for us. We need to really take a look and see how we're growing our English language learners, especially those who are just coming into our district. Another area that we really need to focus on, and I really feel that, you know, without this, we can't make any progress in any, in any area, it's chronic absenteeism. And then another one is ELA progress. Our kids are achieving, but are they making an adequate year's growth compared to last year's? So we need to really take a look at that. Some of the areas that we did meet are gifted progress. Our students are growing, they're progressing, they're achieving. Our math achievement and math progress, our students are doing pretty well in that. ELA achievement was good, but, you know, the progress was not the year's worth of growth, but the achievement was good. And of course, the graduation rate, where our students are doing well. Our subgroups of students are graduating and we're moving them forward and preparing them for post-secondary success. How are we going to address some of these areas and what are we doing specifically? Chronic absenteeism, I think you heard Dr. Kubasak talk about the Brooklyn City, the Brooklyn School Plan. We are really looking at building level plans and working with our administrators and to really develop interventions for our students. And look at root causes and really take a look at what barriers exist and how are we going to remedy these barriers? What are we doing? Are we having small group meetings? Are we including our counselors? And really taking a look at why students are not coming to school. We also have partnered with the Educational Service Center, and we have an attendance dashboard this year, which really gives us attendance data every two weeks. It updates, so that our administrators and our secretaries also, who log in the attendance, can have meetings and really look at which students are repeat offenders and maybe having some discussions with them. And of course, we have our Browns partner, Stay in the Game, and they are involved in many different initiatives with us at Brooklyn School and at the high school level. For English learner progress, we really want to take a look at targeted instruction on deficit domains. So students are ranked, take assessments that are language-based, and the domains are speaking, language, writing, listening. And so we really are focusing, working with our EL staff and our other staff, all our staff, to take a look at really which domains are the students lacking and providing some targeted intervention based on that. We're also taking a look at instructional time and adjusting our EL staff members' schedules based on, do we need to, which students do we need to spend more time on, which grade levels? So we're constantly looking at flexible grouping for our students. We also take a look at our TBT meetings and progress monitor learning and really have those collaborative conversations. Another area is for ELA progress. We're focusing on really building those foundational skills, especially of those newcomer EL students, and really focused on PSYOP skills and visualization techniques. We're adjusting our resources, collaborating with our EL staff and saying, you know, what's working, what's not? What do we need? Do we need to change something? We're always collaborating with teachers. We also added a new learner, newcomers class at the high school level for those students who are just coming into the country and possibly they need a little bit of extra support, not just academic, but also just assimilating to the culture and the language and the people. And finally, math progress. Although this wasn't a great need for us, but it's always, we always want to focus on math. We've got our early literacy project, and we've got our, we've got a new assessment, K-2-3, our Gloss and ICAN. So we really want to make sure that we're supporting our staff to really dive into some of the data that they're learning and really providing intervention and enrichment as needed. And so I'm going to lead on now over to switch gears a little bit to our college and career readiness measure. And this is a new measure for us this year for our report card, and we earned three stars in this. And, you know, we are, last year, we worked with counselors and as staff members to really develop a K through 12 career advising plan. And our goal is to start early. Are we exposing students with what's out there? What careers are out there? Let's make them aware. And so with that, we're providing a lot of experiential learning for our students. It's also important to find out what they're interested in. So we adopted NAVYANCE, and we use the NAVYANCE tool to give interest inventories to students to see where their interests lie, so that we can hone in on those and really, you know, focus on developing students' skills, interests, aptitude. And I'm, from that, we're, you know, one last thing, almost forgot. We also have lots of experiences for our students where they go out into the community, they're going to career fairs, they are working with Polaris, our partners, to get some experiential learning. And we are really excited to continue with that, and we are always working on growing that for our students. And I'll leave it over to Mr. Larson.
Thank you so much. In the first slide here, we're discussing some of the ways we're talking about in terms of the post-graduation impact that we have on our students. So 24% of our students earned an honors diploma last year, and we expect that number to increase as they change some of the parameters about what it takes for a child to earn an honors diploma. And this is more about what we're able to offer to our students while they're currently attending school here. But when you look at the next three metrics especially, we're looking at ways in which we're really solidifying that pathway for our students once they've graduated from the high school. So 70% of our students earned an IRC, which is an industry-recognized credential. And that makes sense, because we've expanded what we're able to offer at the school. We've embedded that in the current existing courses such as Health and ELA3. But really importantly is that 45% of whom earned 12 points in that industry-recognized credential, which means that they are truly career-ready within that particular field in order to start performing and earning money and really having that career versus having a job. And we think that's very, very important. The next metric as well is going to be for our students who are earning college credit before they leave here. And this is great, as we, you're going to hear me in a couple of slides, talk about how we've expanded our college credit plus options for our students. Well, it's not just offering neat courses or courses that are expanded. It's actually really giving our students an honest opportunity to earn college credit at the high school level. So you'll see here, 33% of our students who graduated last year were able to earn college credit before they went off to the next phase of their life, with 14% of those students, or 14% of our overall students who graduated being able to earn 12 credits or more. And you've heard us talk about it several times now. It's really important for us to understand that when we notified the 12, or noticed the 12 points in an industry-recognized credential, we talk about the 12 hours of college credit that have already been earned. we talk about the 12 hours of college credit that have already been earned. These are all things that are going to impact our college and career workforce, military readiness metric on the report card. So you heard Mrs. Colleton discuss how we got three stars. We want to make sure that we're, that's an area where we can certainly improve. And it's an area that if we continue down the path that we've started several years back, I really do believe that we're going to see these numbers improve. And then you guys can see here as well, another part of that metric is making sure that we are reminding our students of the opportunities that are available to them in the armed forces. And so based on the feedback that we received from our students in the surveys that we had them provide a year after graduation, seven of our students have enlisted, or they've intended to enlist once they've graduated from high school. Now, this is not conclusive because not all the students respond, but at least those who have have provided us that insight that they've been able to get into that portion of their career and look at that as an opportunity for them. Talk a little bit more about this. You guys heard us speak several weeks back about the career-based interventions programs that we have. And again, this is just another way for us to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students and to continue to expand the opportunities that our students can have here at the high school. So again, we're talking about workforce readiness, and we're talking about career exploration, offering these opportunities for work-based learning and employability skills. But I think what's really important for us to consider here is what this means from a student experience perspective. And I bring that up only to be able to highlight a wonderful conversation that I had with a parent several, or last week, actually. And this is a parent who talked about them open enrolling their students here at Brooklyn. And I think it's really important for us to understand that all of these advances that we're making are offering a positive experience here at the school. And when I spoke to this mother, her perspective was one of just absolute, you know, admiration and ecstatic excitement for what her sons have been able to experience here at the school. And she really did walk away, and she's walking away with an extremely positive experience. And part of that is because we're truly making an effort to try to meet the students where they are and making sure that we understand that they're not just numbers on a report card, that that's a student who's having this experience at our high school. So again, getting back to what we discussed several weeks ago in our presentation, our career-based intervention is really trying to tailor-make our students' experiences at the high school. Again, talking about tailor-making, we're improving the way that we identify students that we believe could have college credit plus or AP potential. We offer the PSAT assessment at the beginning of the school year instead of at the spring, which is what we'd done previously. Because if we get that information in December, we can start highlighting those students who performed very, very well, some of whom maybe didn't realize that they had CCP or AP potential. So we can provide that information for them. And again, a wonderful experience that we had last year is after we talked to our students who showed this potential, we sent letters home kind of as a congratulations, your child has AP or CCP potential. And the feedback that we received from our parents was overwhelming support for that and just excitement, especially for those families who, maybe they didn't realize necessarily that that was what their child was showing on these assessments. So it's really important that we, that we share that information with the families. But that doesn't mean a whole lot if we're not increasing the opportunities that our students have. So over the last several years, four or five years, so, we've increased the opportunities for AP programming at the high school and increased CCP programming at the high school. So I think it's very important for us to understand that, that we are really doing that in a very concerted manner, especially when we're talking about the pre-AP, which helps to guarantee our students' success when they get to those levels. Because again, it's not just that we're offering these things. We want to make sure that when the kids are taking us up on these offers, that they are successful when they get there. Take a look here, a couple of scores that I really want to point out, really just one in particular. And I think this is, really speaks to what I just talked about, about what our students are able to have. 2024 to 2025, specifically looking at that top one, you're looking at the AP psychology piece. I know it looks as if we went down in there, and I guess to some extent we did from a percentage standpoint. But I want you to keep in mind that in 2024, we didn't have that many students in class. So the fact that they were able to earn that meant that that percentage was up. That 64% is really impactful to me because we had more students earning a three or better on the AP exam, because we had more students taking that class. And that's a class that since we've turned that, since we've offered that to our students, we've seen incredible increases in enrollment to the point now where we may have to start talking about offering a second section of it. So it's really important that we start to think about what it is that we're offering for our students. And some of those scores, as you guys can see, some of these are alternating. So for example, we'll be offering biology in the years that we're not offering chemistry. We'll be offering calculus in the years that we're not offering stats. And really just trying to give our students an opportunity to have a varied experience here at the high school. Whoops, we'll go back. So graduation rate, whoops, it's going too forward. So as we noted before, there's room for improvement here, right? But there isn't, what I want to make sure that we understand is when we're talking about graduation rate, we still have a very high graduation rate. Now, we're talking about, you know, percentage points and points of percentages and things like that. But this is still an area for improvement. But I think that we truly are meeting our students where they are. And programs like the Brooklyn Career Connections Academy and the career-based interventions programs really do allow our students to earn those points towards graduation. And then lastly, again, much as what Dr. Kay pointed out to us, you know, it's very hard to get our students across that stage if they're not showing up. So making sure that we are doing a personalized approach to our students, meeting with families. Mrs. McGee has started a program now where daily our parent squares, I'm sorry, our parents are getting reminders on parent square for those students who are at risk to remind them of the importance of, and that's every single morning. And I get it with them, it's 6:45 and 7:25, a reminder, hey, school is today, you need to be here. And it's really nice. And then the refinement of our MTSS process that you heard Mrs. DeLeez talking about a little bit before then, making sure that we are providing supports for our students based on a variety of things, whether that's academics, behavioral, or attendance. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Jones.
So I kind of come in on the other side of things because if our kids don't feel safe and healthy with social-emotional awareness, then they don't come in prepared to learn. So over the years, we've put a lot of things into place to support our students and families. So some of it is what we've done, and there's a little sneak peek about some other things. But we've maintained our partnership with Metro Health. And we have GuideStone and Doug Winston now, all providing therapy opportunities for kids when needed. We have Crossroads, who is, they still have somebody coming once a week to provide vape cessation programming. And that's helped reduce our suspension numbers. And we've had kids now asking to stay in the program even when they've met the requirements to continue to talk to Steve, which has been great. Handle with Care is something new that we're presenting, and it's pairing, I don't have it up here, but there's a partnership we have with, sorry, with the ESC that we're presenting tomorrow to the staff. It's a new app that staff can go on to report if they have concerns about a student's social-emotional well-being. Usually, it comes reported to them by the kids or just something they've noticed. Maybe they've started isolating themselves, or they're talking about being hungry. They mention homelessness possibly. So there's a private way to report that to the care team, and then there will be a case manager assigned to offer assistance and see what we can do to help the child or the family. Handle with Care is a partnership. Also, the ESC provided training to us. And Officer Dan and Hannah Bencivendi tomorrow will be training the staff. And it's a partnership with Brooklyn First Responders. So if a child has a crisis outside of the school day, they will have, all first responders will have a QR code that simply informs us of the child's name, their grade level, and the fact that there was a crisis. Again, that goes to our crisis care team. And we inform any staff that work with that child to, as we say, handle them with care. We don't know what the crisis is, we don't need to know what the crisis is. We just want to make sure that we know this child today needs a little extra something. And so that's a new rollout this year. Last year, you heard from Hannah and a few others and girls that participated in Rocks. This year in December, you'll be hearing from Mr. Ross and some boys. We now have a similar group from One Circle Foundation, so you'll be learning more about that. On the bottom left there, we have started this year our free breakfast and lunch program for all students, which has been needed and well-received. And then you see Giant Eagle and the Hurricane Family Resource Center. So we continue the food pantry program. It's a little more of a struggle. Last year, we had the grant, and so we're talking and working very hard to maintain some ability to just keep it going and stability. But we're doing everything we can because the numbers have gone up. The need is, is really there, and we're, we're working with the, sorry, the city. We're looking into great opportunities to see what we can do to keep it going. The Family Resource Center, as we know, the food pantry was created in part to give our high school students with those more intensive needs work opportunities. And now that the Early Childhood Center is open and going, we can now start focusing on the and family resource center part of it. And so we'll be spending the second half of the year turning a room into that Family Resource Center, the food pantry, clothing, some of the school supplies, to give kids an opportunity to come to work, do, you know, do things to prepare that room and, and then go back. But, and then unfortunately with that, we have seen really district-wide, and I've talked to other people service directors that are seeing the same thing, we're seeing quite an increase in the numbers of kids with intensive needs between autism, Down Syndrome, and just medically fragile. So it's great that we have this opportunity for them, and we're lucky that we have our partnership with Polaris and they're, they call it the ESL Employability Skills Lab Program for our kids to attend in a, kind of a step towards employment after graduation. So I think I've hit all of those. And then we have community engagement and communication. So just some things that have been going on. We have the Resource Fair, the, sorry, my notes aren't on this, so I can't see my notes. My Guy Walk, there's Walk with the Hero, Hurricane Heritage, Veterans Day, and the opening, of course, of the Beck and the big grand opening for the community. So there's a lot of things going on to engage families and make sure the community knows that they're a part of the district, whether they have kids here or not. So. Back to Lisa.
So the two biggest components of our report card, our achievement and progress. So those, we save those for the end. Our achievement did go up this year. We were a two-star last year. We, we were right on that cusp. It was 69.5, you need a 70 to earn the three. Of course, we want to see that 72 performance index percent rise. The further we are away from 70, we know we're not slipping back into the two. So we want to keep seeing that go up. What I'd like to point out here is if you notice, you want to move kids from basic and limited up into proficient, accomplished, and advanced. And if you look from the 23-24 school year to the 24-25, we are making gains in our proficient, accomplished, and advanced. We want to continue seeing those numbers grow and basic and limited reduce. Still a big focus, it's something that we talk about at our teaching and learning meetings, talk about in our data meetings, how we continue to getting more kids reaching proficiency levels. Progress. Now, this achievement is, did you score a 700 on the test or higher, right? Did you get 700 to get proficient? Progress is, it's a formula that they take. It is a formula that says where the kid showed up in your class at this time to where they actually learned and the results that they received. Whether they hit the achievement score or not, how well are they doing in that classroom? How much progress did they make? We scored, we received a five, we significantly exceed state standards. 55 out of 607 districts reporting. This progress, along with our graduation rate, also earned us an exempt status from the state. We were recognized as being an exempt school, exempt district, I should say. And with that, there's, we get it for three years, starting with this school year. And it's a status that kind of lets us have some flexibility with hiring and some resident educator mentoring programs and expectations for our staff. So it just offers an exemption. It offers us, because we earned, because we received a five in our progress in our graduation rate, you don't get this every year. Not everybody's recognized with an exempt status. So this is something we definitely want to celebrate. And I think progress is, this is where the kid is, and this is where you got them regardless. I don't know, maybe that's just, I'm biased in that sense, is like, our teachers, our community, our students, our parents, we're working really hard. So we're very proud of this five on our progress. And that's something we want to continue. And how are we going to do? We talked about MTSS at the beginning. We have, out of the Teaching and Learning Office, we have math implementation teams, literacy implementation teams, a professional development team. We just this year, myself and Dave Wallace have created an instructional technology team. Many things, AI is coming out of this instructional technology. What are we doing with artificial intelligence? You're going to see some process and procedures for our staff and our students. Our PD team, what, what are the things that we need to bring to the table? Math is, we had a big focus on literacy. Our math is still an area that needs a lot of love and attention. And what are we doing there? And so our math implementation team works on those things. And so I just want to thank all of our staff, from the administrative staff, to our teaching staff, to our classroom assistants, to our monitors, to everybody in the classified, from the people that are, the bus drivers that are getting our kids here, to the food service, the cleaners, the custodians, everybody has been part of this, and, and we couldn't do this without everybody. So lots of good work happening. I think one of the exciting things is we know that the more students are involved, the better they perform. They need to feel like they belong somewhere and that they need to have it, something more than just coming to school and getting good grades. So what we've seen is our athletic and activity participation. If you notice, it has, well, we don't have 25-26 this year, but 24-25, oh, is this fall then? Yes, we, that's fall of 25-26. Yeah, I was like, wait, what happened? This is fall of 25-26. But you can see, over the years since COVID, we are starting to see an increase in our athletics and activity programming, which is exciting for our kids and continuing to look for opportunities for them. And operations finance, this is part of our strategic plan. I think Dr. Claire's talked about the renovation plan. These are just some pictures of some of the things and some of the areas we're super excited about, the new preschool opening being here. And that football field looks absolutely amazing from that drone. And, you know, you walk in the gym and you just, I can't wait to see the bleachers in, and I can't wait to see our basketball teams out there and, and getting to experience that space. So we're just really excited about all the things that we're doing to improve our facilities. And that is the end of our show.
Any questions, everybody? Any questions?
The overall, the one slide you had, had the overall score being 255 out of 607.
Yes.
That's the overall number, or was that a specific one?
That is the, so when you, so if you just look at achievement, so if you're thinking about, did I go past it again?
Go forward. Go back.
This one.
Yeah.
So there are different data points. So if you're looking at just achievement, which is what the Cleveland.com and the Blame, like, they're putting out just our achievement. So that 72.6 ranks us about 400 and something. But if you're looking at our overall score of our four, the overall four, and they take all of those components, early literacy, graduation, the career readiness, progress, proficiency, we score 255 out of the 607 schools. So it depends, you know, when I looked, I had heard, like, I wanted to double-check those numbers, but then when I look at Cleveland.com, they're only reporting achievement when they, they put in your district. That's what I saw on our website.
And if you look at, if you go back to our progress data, which is 55 out of 607, that puts us at the top 10% school district in the state of Ohio based on just that progress measure. So. So this data, as Lisa said, it's that cumulative piece, and then we've looked at each, each specific area. Rock, you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say I've been doing this somewhere 16, 17, 18 years, and this is the finest presentation that I've seen, and I want to thank you guys for all that. Broken down real well for me, better than I've seen over the years, so I just want to thank you for the presentation, and what a good job you did.
Excellent.
Academically as well, too. The top 10%, we can advertise.
You can advertise anything you want.
I'm not lying, so.
We're not?
That's a fact.
Right, it's true. Anyway, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I just, I just want to thank you guys. I'm pretty nitpicky on these presentations, as all of them will attest to, but, but I'll tell you what, from, from our students to staff to our leadership team, I mean, nothing is perfect in, when you're, when you're working a school district, and what I, what I will say is, is the, the report card data is, is an important piece of kind of that measure of how we do things, but, but our, our staff and our leadership team, we, they truly look at that whole child and how can we, how can we impact a student and a family from a positive standpoint to, to improve academics, to grow academics, to improve achievement, and knowing that, that, that K through 12, it's a, it's a marathon, it's not a, it's not a sprint. Some students start at different places. Our goal is to get everybody where they need to be by the time they walk out our doors. And if they, if we get them in pre-K, or if we get them in ninth grade, it's that same amount of effort in terms of getting them where they need to be. So I couldn't be prouder of our team, our staff, our kids, and that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good job, thank you very much.
Okay, do you have any other more business? Is any next regular board meeting?
Oh, wait, can I say one thing? Post-prom is having a fundraiser on Saturday. They asked me if I would please share that, and it is at 7 to, it's late. It is from, it's at 7 to 10 at Rook's in Parma Heights, $30 a ticket. And it's helping to raise funds for our post-prom activities for our juniors and seniors. It's a wing night.
The next regular meeting is Tuesday, November 18, here at the Early Childhood and Family Resource Center, 1000 West Road, Ohio. Then after that, the final two days of the year, Tuesday, December 2nd, and Tuesday, December 16th. We have a motion to adjourn, please.
Sure.
We have a second. Mr. Sheehan, please.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Serroni.
Yep.
Mr. Hubbell.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Crawford.